Welcome to One on One. I'm Greg Bassett, your host for the Salisbury Independent Newspaper. It's a big day here at PAC 14 because we are in the middle of election season and we are interviewing candidates for the various offices in Wycomico County. And one of the most important ones is the county council at large. And we have Republican candidate Julie Bruington here today. Welcome Julie.
Thank you so much for having me.
So you're running for county council? Are you crazy?
Yeah.
That's a lot of work.
Some days I do think so. I, you know, mentioned I had an earlier forum today and I wasn't anticipating that I'd scheduled the same thing. So it is very busy, but the reason I am running is I've been involved, compelled to be involved for a decade with the county council, local politics with people. And I just love our county and I want to make a difference. And I think there we're a sort of a pivotal point of growth and we're going to have to decide where we want to go. And I want to be a part of that.
Well, it's an awesome responsibility. It's great that you're up to it. You ran for delegate one time before, but this is a different role. And I see at the county meetings, you're very involved. You seem to have a big handle on the issue. So what is the issue that's driving you? You mentioned development, but what are you most concerned about within our county?
Well, there's a couple, a couple of things that I think are of great concern. There's a big push for funding for education here. And while I, my kids just graduated from public school, did very well from Parkside. They went through the art program there, which prepared them with some college credits and that's what they chose to do. And they've done very well and I've been very pleased. Of course, I've been really involved with my kids. And I understand that there are families out there that are, you know, lacking and there is, you know, there is a disparity. But, you know, we live in a fairly poor county and, you know, there's only so much money to go around. So I really want to, I talked to Matt Holloway when he decided he wasn't going to run again.
Right. He's that large member who is not running again, yes.
He was there for quite a long time and did really well in terms of his votes, probably more, I think he got probably the most votes from anyone. But I talked to him about, you know, who could be, you know, rational, conservative, balanced voice, who's been involved? And who, who knows enough, I think, to, to be wise in our decisions of what we're doing. And I felt I could fill that role. And like I said, talked to him in depth. And so I just, I just, I don't can't explain exactly why I want to be of service to people. I just love our community and I feel like it's something I'm called to do, if that makes any sense.
Sure.
And so, you know, it's cost me a lot. There's been, you know, some difficulties in that for a number of reasons. But I'm here to serve and I, and I want to do the right thing for our county as we spur into what I consider another growth period. And I would like to make it something that's an economic boom here as opposed to increasing everybody's taxes to, to fund things that are not necessarily accountable.
Right. Now, accountability is a big issue, especially with the school board, as you mentioned. And like you said, there has been sort of a move lately to spend more on education. There seems to be like a growing tide. County council in the last budget actually increased.
Yes, it did.
For the first time in 12 years, I think.
Yes, 500,000.
Yeah. So that was pretty good. But you're saying it's not as simple as that, that...
Well, I mean, we need to make sure we have safe communities. We need to make sure the police are well-funded. You know, we have all kinds of programs. We have parks and recs. We have tourism, that could be a possibility. We have the airport that is a jewel to our county. We have a lot of things that are on the precipice of taking off. You know, Salisbury University obviously is very large. We are an ag community though. So I think that when we look at economic development here, we need to focus on our strengths. And I really feel like the way to do better for our county and do more for folks and meet the needs. And we do well.
Right.
I think we do well.
Right.
We're spending more than ever.
Right.
Is, is to increase the, the tax base. And the only way we increase the tax base is get more people coming here, more houses and businesses going up and better jobs. I mean, our average income here is $45,000.
Right.
You can get a $45,000 job anywhere around here. Unemployment is good. I mean, you know, last I saw it was under 5%.
It's very good. Our county's very good.
Yes. So there's a lot of things going right. I mean, I'm not here to complain about how, what the county's done.
Right.
Or what the council's done. I want to improve on what has happened before. And I think we owe a debt of gratitude to the council that has now and preceded us. I really think they've done a great job.
I'm glad you mentioned economic development because when Bob Culver ran for county executive, that was a big part of what he did. And when you look at how the council has treated him in that arena, I don't know that they've been as supportive of him as I thought they would be in terms of, of helping that. Do you want to change that a little bit?
Well, you know, it's an interesting dynamic and I'm not sure that I understand all the facets of, you know, the different personalities and the different issues and, and some of it. What I do know is there's been some tension between the executive branch and the council. And what I'm going to say is I don't think that that is necessarily a bad thing. You know, we changed over government systems.
Right. 12 years ago.
Yeah. When Rick Pollak, and I love Rick. Hi, Rick. But, you know, I, I think Bob is doing a great job. I think, you know, what happens in politics, I know all too well. It's, you know, there's a lot of very personal issues that come into it. I think it's really unfortunate that, you know, people attack each other or just even... That's a whole nother subject.
Sure, sure.
But the, but, but the tension between the two divisions of the branches of government and our, and they're all in the same party.
Yeah. That's the thing is they're all in the same party.
And so there's some tension. I don't think it's bad.
Right.
I think it's good.
It's a natural thing.
I think it should be that way because there should be no autonomous person making one decision. So sometimes it's maybe not the smoothest process we like, but I mean, I'm okay. I'm comfortable with it.
Are you, are you happy with the county executive system? There's been some people who say, maybe we should review that, let the council run the county again?
I hadn't put a great thought to that, but I mean, kind of prefer a council system. However, you know, we are a growing county. I'm, I, I'm not quite sure. I mean, I think Bob has done a good job. I don't have any complaints, but I haven't gotten deep inside to see everything, so.
You mentioned tensions and one thing I feel, and it actually bothers me, I'm not supposed to insert myself. But I feel tension between the city of Salisbury and the county.
That's true.
And, I mean, you live out in the middle of nowhere and I lived out in the middle of nowhere.
I'm like three miles from Walmart.
Okay, so you're, you're better. I lived out in the middle of nowhere. But I still cared a lot about Salisbury and what happened to Salisbury. But I, like, I feel that tension. So do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Well, you know, my understanding, and mine's not deep. It's my observation over the years and strictly that. You know, a little bit of information here and there, but, you know, we have a municipality. Municipality determines a lot about what's going on in the county. But, you know, there's a lot of people in the county that don't want to be run like the city of Salisbury. And so a lot of the discussions are over the fire department coverage. I mean, I think it's been a long history of this, you say tension, I say difference of opinion of how things are run. Obviously, the county depends on the city. That's where our economic happenings are going to develop. But, you know, it's over, it's over a matter of finances is my understanding basically. And probably some, you know, personality differences too.
Right. What, what do you hope to bring to the council? Is there like one big issue that, or a problem that you want to get there and solve? That go, alright, I've done something important here.
Yeah. So the one thing that most everybody talks to me about, I mean, for years and years. And, you know, I'm, I'm a from here. I'm a from here so far back.
Very much, yes you are.
And I, you know, spend time away and, you know, I'm not sheltered. I've been, you know, all over. But the one people do say to me is, and I, I have lived it myself, is that the opportunities here professionally to grow, to develop, to excel are extremely limited. And, I mean, anybody can get a $45,000 a year job around here. I may say anybody, but, I mean, there are professional friends, myself included. You know, my husband has a chemistry degree. He's working over in King George, Virginia right now because, and I only see him on weekends. And this has gone on for years because tell me where you can be, you know, a coal-fired energy plant chemist on the eastern shore. You cannot. So, so there's challenges. That's what I want to do. I want to figure out and try. And I know there's been a lot of efforts in this and I'm not diminishing the efforts. They're, they're growing the airport. There's a lot of stuff that I think is key. But, you know, we've lost a lot of business here. Campbell Soup, Dresser Rain, plating companies, I can't remember the names, Safran. I mean, there's a number of them that have never been replaced. And I'm not even going back into the areas where industry, you know, kind of went away, which is, you know, we used to have big shirt factories.
Sure.
Going back in the day.
Everywhere.
Right. So, I mean, we know why that happened. That was a national thing. These other things, some of them are national and some of them are local. And I think we need to figure out and work harder to bring business here, industry. And I think there's only, I think, I don't think we need to change. I think we need to be who we are, which is, you know, an ag community. I mean, I can't tell you the number of industries around ag around here that we have. Good industry jobs, you know? I, I've been in every chicken plant on the eastern shore, so I kind of know that business really well. But we have also the university. There's a lot of subsidiary businesses around that. And I'm hoping tourism can, you know, blossom here at some point. I think we have a beautiful county and a lot to offer. And that's something we should focus on as well.
Yep. Someone made the point just today. I said, I'd like to have a billion dollars. And they said, you know what a billion dollars would get you? And I was like, no. And they said it would get you 1/24 of the Purdue company. Isn't that amazing?
Yeah.
You know, and all of it generating from right here.
Well, you know, it is fascinating. And I get a little upset about people that attack the poultry industry and the ag industry so much. And I think their hearts are in good places because they, you know, everybody wants clean water and clean air and we have challenges with that. But, you know, our, our industry here is, you know, ag. And to stray from that would be a huge mistake. And like I said, I know the poultry industry very well. I've, you know, I know the people at corporate. I know I've been in every Purdue plant. I've been in their kill rooms. Can you imagine?
Yeah.
I have. I still eat chicken, still love it. You know, it's a fascinating industry. The, the depths of that industry is nothing like you've ever seen in anything else. And I think one of the things I do bring is the understanding of the, of the poultry industry and the ag industry here. How to protect it while we remain, you know, conscious of our environment.
You're a very sensitive and personal, personable person.
Thank you. I am sensitive.
You had a little incident.
It's my downfall.
You had a little incident last spring. It was kind of a life-changing incident.
Yes.
Do you want to talk about that for the voters?
Well, all I want to say is that I think it's, every one of us has our personal challenges in life. It's not often they are publicly aired on television for three days. I did, I had no idea how, how interesting I was. But everybody has, you know, their personal challenges. And anybody who pretends that they don't is not telling the truth. We're all human beings. We're all imperfect. We all miss, make mistakes. And I've talked about that, that was a mistake. But if I were to get into the details of that incident, which I would almost think would be fair to me if I were able to, it would take much longer to do this show. So what I would hope is that people, you know, I'm seeing this on national television, these personal attacks on people, whether they happen or not. And I would say, my character is not one instance in my life. And I want to get back to the work of the people of Wycomico County. I think people are more concerned about their livelihood and their taxes and their enjoyment and their community than they are about some obscure thing that people may want to use against me. And I would think that's really unfortunate, that people would judge me by a very bad moment in my life.
Well, you're giving up a lot of this, a lot of personal stuff for this endeavor. And I know, and I know people want to reach out to you and talk to you. You're, you're everywhere. You're talking to people, which is great that you're out there. How can people reach you to communicate and tell you how they're feeling or ask you questions?
So I have a really active Facebook page, but we've got to get to 800 this week likes. And that is Julie D. Bruington, Wycomico, I think it's just under Julie D. Bruington, Wycomico County Council at Large. My website is Julie4Wycomico.com. And people are welcome to call me. I would be happy. I love to engage with people. I really do have a heart for people and I like to talk to them and I like to connect and see how we can enrich each other's lives. So call me 410-726-0088.
She's Julie Bruington. She's running for county council as an at-large member in this fall's election. And we're excited to have had her here today. Thanks for being here, Julie.
Thank you so much, Greg. I really appreciate the time.
Thanks. Now we're with Jamad Gould, who's running for Wycomico County Council at Large. I think this is the first time he's doing this. Welcome, Jamad.
Thank you for having me.
So what drove you to get involved in local politics like this?
Where do I start? It's a, you kind of see it around the country, a wave of young people getting involved in politics. And it's really because we're not being represented. Our thoughts, ideals are not being represented in politics. And I see that same thing happening here on the eastern shore, whether it be my views on racial issues. You know, growing up as an African-American male here on the eastern shore, my opinion may be a little different from others. And I have a different perspective that isn't being vocalized. Or whether it be my opinions on growing up right about the poverty line. So whether it be from being for that lower socioeconomic status or whether it just be being a millennial from my age group, none of my feelings, none of the, how I think about things, they're not being represented on a political scale. And that's doing a disservice to a large number of people that live here in Wycomico County. And I know for a fact that I can be that representation that they need. So I decided to throw my hat in the race.
Where do you differ on some of the issues or what are your perspectives that might be a little bit unique?
My perspective, I think it's all around. If you look at the current construction of the county council, it is all one, all Republican, all older white gentlemen, except for one person, Councilman Ernie Davis, who represents District One. Ironically, that is the district where there is 51% of minorities of the county that live in that one district. He's a lone Democrat, lone minority there. So there's, there's a lot of, you know, coming from different backgrounds. A lot of people are realtors, I think, all except for Mark Kilmer.
Right.
Who represents District Two.
Right.
Everybody else is a realtor.
They're all tied to real estate or growth and development.
Absolutely. So it's just like, they've been around that. They've been around homeowners specifically. Nothing wrong with homeownership. I look, I look forward to doing it myself. My mother's just finally gotten to a home. And she's, you know, in her older years. I won't say her age. You don't know a woman's age. But I come from just a different environment growing up. And I think that perspective is the one that a lot of people can resonate with. And when you're talking about government that's going to govern a wide array of people, you need a wide array of perspectives so that you can properly govern all those people.
Yeah. It's funny, our council is not funny. It's not quite tragic, but it's not funny either. There are council over the years, and I've watched this carefully, where they'll be trying to make a decision and they can't quite decide. And they'll, they'll look over at the District One candidate or representative and say, how do the black people feel about this? Because, because they're not tied in close enough to have a sense of the constituency. And it just drives me crazy when they do that.
Yeah.
I think they're trying to do it in a good-natured way, but it makes me crazy. I mean, do you see that?
Yeah. I absolutely do see that. And I think it's a disservice to the community. When you're in politics, you're a public servant. There's no way around that. And I think one of the biggest things missing from politics on a local level, on a state level, on a national level, is just being that down-home person that people can relate to and talk to. So that you have a real beat on how people feel about issues. So when you go into those chambers and you go to vote, you know you're voting in the best consciousness of the community that you're serving. But if you're not in tune with those people, you can't really do that. And I think that's why those things happen where you kind of look at District One, how are black people feeling? Where it's, it'd be like, you should know, you know, because you should have been talking to them. You should have been talking to everybody about all the issues that you're going to be voting on.
The reputation, the stereotype millennials, you guys aren't supposed to be worried about politics in the world. You're supposed to be doing video games. Why are you, I know how my son is 24. Why are you different?
I don't think I am. I think I just realized that there isn't really that separation between what we're interested in and politics. I think politics plays a huge role in our lives and we just don't really see it. Like millennials are having children. Our children have to go to school. Who funds the Board of Education? The county council, taxes, taxpayers. You have to get involved. You have to know about these things. When you're talking about social justice reform, if you have family members that are in jail and are talking about bail reform or things of that nature. There's so many facets of our life, whether it be homeownership, affordable housing, education. Everything is connected with politics. And if we're going to take over as the next generation of leaders, why would we wait so long to get involved? Where we're then out of touch with a large population of people. Like I said, I think that's what happened. There's so many people that waited so long to get involved. Now they're out of touch with such a large population of people. And the only way that we can really correct that is for have the younger people get involved at this early age. So we're having that proper representation in all of our governance.
Yeah. I know with my kids, they're very politically active. They have lots of ideas. And I almost can't wait for them to get in charge because they're going to take on issues like gun control and racism, things that my generation was afraid to handle.
And that's the idea. I mean, I've been, I went to the March in Our Lives in DC. Very amazing event. A lot of great speakers. Thoughts impressive to the people that lost their lives at Parkland High School and all the other mass shootings that we've had in our country. It's time for common sense gun reform. I have no problem saying it. I have no problem tackling the issue. Common misconception, do not want to take guns away. Just want to have some control over it.
Right.
Like the Second Amendment says, well-regulated militia is what we're supposed to have, you know? Issues of racism, I've been dealing with 27 years, 27 years old. So coming out, you know, into existence, that's something I've had to deal with my entire life. Can no longer wait to tackle it because I have, currently have 21 nieces and nephews. What do I look like letting their generation take that on? If my generation can deal with the issues and fix it before they even become adults. I plan to have my own children very soon, hopefully. What do I like letting my son or daughter deal with those things? If I can deal with it as I'm an adult and I'm their parent, I want them to live a better life. We have to take on these issues now. So like you said, we, we do have a lot of ideas and we want to tackle the issues. We just have to get into the places of, of power.
You mentioned education, always the big issue in the county.
Absolutely.
In the last year and a half or so, some local business people have stepped up, community leaders concerned about the future of our education system. Want to spend a little bit more money on education. As a county council member, where are you on that?
Absolutely spending it. I understand there's concerns about where the money's going to come from. But I also understand that the only way to improve the businesses here in Wycomico County, the only way to improve the life of a lot of people here in Wycomico County is to have a better educated population. And if we're not spending the money per, per student here in our, on a county level, not including our state funds, because at any time the state can be like, hey, we're tired of funding so much of your education. And then we're stuck.
Right.
At the bottom.
And they threaten that all the time.
All the time. And it's, and they've said it repeatedly, we're tired of doing this. We're tired of doing this. So we never know when it's going to happen. Then we're going to be really stuck at the bottom of the state as far as funding our students. And then what, where does that leave us? So I'm fully for funding our education fully. I think Dr. Hanlon has a great plan. I want to see universal pre-K. I want to see it actually expanded so we can have more after-school activities where the students are involved, where the students are involved more with the teachers or faculty members or staff that want to be involved in the after-school portion of, of education. So, because sometimes the classroom environment just doesn't work for some kids. And that's, that's just what it is. Some kids can't learn in that facet, but in other environments they can. That's where, you know, you have the coaches coming involved with sports and things like that. And maybe even pulling the parents in because parents are in, are at work when kids are at school. So that after-school time is so pivotal when you talk about education. If we can expand our after-school program and to allow, you know, more parents to be involved, then we stop that disconnect that we're always talking about where the students say one thing and the parents and teachers are going at each other.
Yeah. You know, my kids in the public school here, the athletics, and they weren't great athletes, but they were very involved and they tried hard. And they were mentored and coached.
Absolutely.
And it was, it really added to their, their school experience. And people, I don't think people even think about that. I think when they think about spending more on education, it means paying teachers more money and it sort of ends there. They, they don't realize the, all the benefits that spread across the community with kids and with stuff.
Absolutely. And I had my first wrestling coach, Coach Deion Johnson.
Right.
Over at Mardella.
Right.
I still stay in contact with him.
They had a great program there for a long time. Yeah.
Wonderful. And he still stays in contact with friends on Facebook now, now that I've become an adult. So, and he, see, see me on public. We stop, we have conversations. He's just him. Because I've never had a black male teacher on my.
Really?
All my years in school. I never, because I transferred from Mardella to Parkside.
Okay.
I'm after middle school, so I never had a chance to take Coach Johnson as a teacher. I had him guidance counselors, but I never had a black male teacher. And, but his influence on my life, being the only black male teacher, or one of the only black male teachers that I saw in the school system, was tremendous. And then for him to be my wrestling coach as well.
Right.
His, anything he said, I held on to. Like he was my father figure to me because I didn't have a father growing up.
Interesting. You get elected to the council, what's the first thing you want to kind of push them to do?
Ooh, there's so many things that come to mind there.
Where they're not getting it, just some kind of initiative, something they need to work on.
I think my biggest, one of my biggest things is, like I said, I'm a millennial. Millennials, if you threw a poll of us, I guarantee you, one of the biggest things that we're going to say is we want our government to communicate with us better. And I want to work on transparency. That's always one of my points. We need a more transparent government. So one of the first things I want to do is implement a system that the government process or the voting processes for the county council can be more transparent so the public can have a bigger say in what the county's voting on and how they're voting. Because they can have real-time input on the issues.
It's, it's true. You know, they think they're transparent, but they're, they're not as transparent as they think. And they're definitely not transparent on issues that they don't think about necessarily. That seem kind of routine. But it's not routine to the public that doesn't understand.
Absolutely. And we need that to educate the public in a sense. And the easiest way for that to happen is to have more transparency happen. I like the idea of live streaming things. That way you can be anywhere in the world.
Right.
On your smartphone, because we all have them. You can be on your computer. Maybe even a lot of people's TVs that have smart TVs, they can stream to their TV. They can watch the meetings. They can type what they want to say to the council. It can be read, you know, by the entire council members. That way, everybody can see what the public's true opinions is rather than voting on a matter and then waiting till the end of the meeting to have, you know, the public spoken section where the decision's already been made. So are you going to go back and change your decision or are you just going to live with it and have public outcry?
Right.
So that's a huge thing to me. And I think that's, while it's, it sounds difficult, it's a very simple thing to implement. And I think that will probably be the first thing I tackle.
How can people get ahold of you to ask you questions to find out more about Jamad?
So I'm always available. Email onevoicewycomico, or onevoicewico@gmail.com, sorry. I had to think about it. So onevoicewico@gmail.com and Facebook. I'm always on Facebook. My phone's in my pocket. It'll alert me whenever you send me a message or write on my wall or anything like that. Jamad Gould for Wycomico County Council at Large.
He's Jamad Gould. He's running for county council at large as a Democrat. And it was just thrilling to have him here today. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me. Thank you.
We are interviewing the candidates for our county offices. Today, we're doing the Wycomico County Council at Large. And we have Bill McCain with us, a Democrat. Welcome, Bill.
Thanks for having me, Greg.
Now, Bill, you were on the council before.
Yes.
You left.
Yes.
You didn't run for reelection.
That is correct.
Now you're back.
Well, when I ran the first time, I actually announced it upfront. I had my own self-imposed one-term limit.
Right.
And so I ran and I was elected and I served my term. And I thought I was done, but now here I am. I'm back again.
So why are you back?
Well, when I served the first time, a lot of the issues that we were dealing with then, we were actually still dealing with those same issues. And also things have changed for me as well when I ran the first time. One of the reasons I did my own self-imposed limit was my children were teenagers at the time and I have a business. And, yeah, I was very busy. We had a lot of things going on. And so I knew it would be a challenge from a time perspective. So I committed to those four years. Now my children are grown and both live out of the. Now my children are grown and both live out of the area. I'm still very involved in the community. I think I'm just as busy now as I was then, but in a different way. So I was willing to get back into the fray again.
And it was an interesting four years when you were on the council. A lot happened.
A lot happened. You know, we had some big issues. We were actually the first council under the executive form of government. So it was kind of new for everybody. So definitely we had a lot of new things we had to deal with. And I think we did a pretty good job that first, that first go-round. And so, yeah, it was, it was interesting to say the least.
Now, Matt Holloway, who's on the council, he's leaving. And I've always thought of him as the voice of the farmer on the council. Joe Holloway is too. But you have a lot of agriculture experience and I consider you a potential voice for the farm. You want to talk about agriculture in the county?
Sure. Well, I mean, I grew up as a kid in Delmar and actually spent all my summers working on farms. And I'm an avid outdoorsman. I actually owned two farms in the, in the county. And actually Matt is, it was my seat that, when I came off the council, that Matt took. So it's kind of ironic that now he's coming off and I'm running again, hoping to sort of go back to my seat. But I've always been very involved, involved in the agricultural community. In fact, my sister lives on the Upper Shore, lives in Chestertown. And her husband is a big farmer in the Kent County area around Chestertown. And so their whole life has been involved in agriculture. So it's an important part of my life as well.
The council right now is all Republicans but one. You're a Democrat. Is it a challenge being a Democrat running in the county?
Well, you know, at the local level, I don't see, to me, I don't see partisan politics at the local level. You know, the issues that we deal with, you know, education and sewer and our airport and things of that nature. You know, these are not Republican issues, they're not Democrat issues, they're local issues. And so for me, I, you know, I just don't, I don't look through that lens of partisanship when it comes to local politics.
One of the things I sense, and I don't know if it's true, but I sense this, is that there were a lot of people who want you to run, who want you to come back, that you were sort of pulled back into this thing. Is that true?
That's, that's true. I mean, I was reluctant at first because, I mean, I've served before. And, and I said I was going to do it my one term. And so I did have a lot of people encouraging me to run. And like I said before, I've always been very involved and still am very involved in the community. So I've never lost the interest. And, you know, I took a step back and gave it some deep thought. And in the end, made that decision. I mean, I've been a Rotarian for 30 years. And Rotary's motto is service above self. And so I've always been, you know, I've always looked at that as a model of how you should live your life. And I'm not one to sit on the sidelines. So I decided, you know what, I'm willing to get back into it again.
What are the big issues in this last year that's been different? We've seen a lot of the outside sources, business community, community leaders coming together and pushing for more education funding, higher education funding. Where are you on that issue? Is that, has that been unique? Or do you appreciate what people are trying to do?
Oh, I appreciate it very much. I'm a very big advocate for education, always have been. And in fact, this past year during the budget season, it was the first time I've ever seen all the leading organizations in our community coming together, asking for full funding of the superintendent's strategic plan. You know, we had at the budget meeting, you had there, you had the United Way, you had Greater Salisbury Committee, you had the Chamber of Commerce, you had various people from the community. You had the Community Foundation there. You know, all the people in concert asking for the same thing. You know, they know the importance of getting behind education. And I think it's very obvious, people, you know, I don't think you have to spend too much time explaining to people how important it is to have an educated populace. You know, these are the people that are going to be your future leaders and your future employees and employers. And, but what people don't talk a lot about is, it's your number one economic driver. If you want a community to grow and prosper, it's your education system is really the core of that. And so it's a big economic driver as well as just the educational aspect to it.
And I remember when you were on the county council before, you spent a lot of time trying to explain that to your colleagues who were not as embracing as education, of education as you would think.
Well, and that's one of the reasons I've entered this race again. The, you know, historically, we've been funding maintenance of effort, which is the minimum that's required by the state of Maryland. And this past year, the council did fund above maintenance of effort for the first time. I think it's the first time in.
Since 2006.
Yeah, right. So, you know, it's been over a decade since we've done that. And, but it was somewhat minimal because the request from the Board of Ed, they were requesting $5 million over maintenance of effort.
Right.
And $500,000 was funded.
Right.
So there's still quite a bit of gap there. And, you know, that $5 million is designated for universal pre-K and to increase graduation rates and to retain a quality workforce in our school system, to attract, you know, quality teachers. And because there's a nationwide shortage of educators. And Maryland is, of all the states, has one of the biggest shortages. So it's, you know, you've got to be very competitive if you're going to attract the best people.
People say that we're a poor county, that we can't afford to pay more taxes for education. Is there a way to fund education without raising taxes?
Well, first of all, the question, no one during this whole campaign, not one person has ever said anything about raising taxes. In fact, several of the incumbent council members like to share that, you know, we, our revenue's actually gone up over the last couple of years. I think this past year, the revenue was up about $7.5 million. And that's mainly due to increase in our income tax revenues. A lot of people are back to work, you know, the economy's doing well. So when the economy does well, we do well from the income tax side. But our two main sources of revenue is our, from our property taxes. And the other half, a little bit more than half, comes from our income taxes. So, you know, we have a budget of give or take $150 million. Only about $50 million of that goes to K through 12. So the dollars are there. You know, it's more of a question of where you spend the money. How do you slice up that pie and what are your priorities?
When the county executive was elected, he went in with a pro-business economic development platform. Council was supportive the first year, but then it kind of died out. They weren't, they were skeptical about what he was trying to achieve in competition with the Salisbury Wycomico Economic Development Corporation and that kind of thing. You're a real estate appraiser, commercial appraiser, you're very involved in the market. What's, what's the sense of what's going on in terms of economic development? Do we need to put more emphasis on it? Or are we doing pretty well the way we're doing it? What's your thought?
Well, you know, the good thing is in our county, we have a very diverse base. I mean, we have manufacturing, we have agriculture. Really, our largest sector is our public service sector. You know, if you include government and Salisbury University and the hospital. You know, that's really our biggest sector when you get down to it. But, you know, any community, you need, you need those employers, you need those new employers to come. And the challenge is how do you make yourself attractive? And I kind of, you know, I hate repeating about education, but really you go back to education. You know, that, you know, a good school system and a school system that has a very positive reputation attracts employers. You know, it gets back to that economic tool. You know, it's one of your best economic tools. And, and at the same time, another thing is, you know, the executive office and the county council, definitely you need to be working together. You know, I think that's something that hopefully I can contribute to the council and to the, working with the executive. I know all three of the folks that are running for executive, I know all three of them. I feel I'm someone that can work with people. We all don't have to agree. You know, it's not healthy for us all to always agree. You know, well, you know, having debate about issues and so forth and coming to a common ground is a healthy way to solve most issues. So, but we have to work together to get there. So, you know, I'm definitely, you know, an advocate for us working together to make the best decisions for Wycomico County.
You see tensions between the council and the executive now. When you were, there were tensions when you were on the council before, but it seemed more partisan, Democrats versus Republicans. Now it seems more institutional somehow that the executive wants to be in charge and the council wants to run things. So they kind of butt heads. Do you see that?
I see that. I mean, I think the community sees that. I mean, and I think some of that still comes from, even though the executive office has been in place now for.
12 years.
12 years. I still think there's some challenges there between what's really the role of the council and what's the role of the executive office. But in actuality, in, you know, a charter form of government like we have, the executive office runs those day-to-day activities. They have the power. You know, the council's more the check and balance and, and, you know, I think we just have to recognize that.
Another area of tension that we see is between the city and the county, where people in the county don't seem to appreciate Salisbury maybe as much as they could, or they don't understand Salisbury and certainly vice versa. What's your opinion about the city right now?
Well, the city's doing great things. You know, you know, under the leadership of Jake Day, a lot of, a lot's happened in the city in the last couple of years. You know, we just, we're just coming off the heels of the National Folk Festival. And just what an outstanding event.
Wasn't it great?
I was there all three days of the event, you know, despite the weather. And I think the needed, neediest thing about that was people were happy.
Yeah.
You know, just everybody you saw, they were smiling and I just heard nothing but positive feedback from the event. And, but, you know, the downtown, there's a lot going on downtown, you know. But all this is in Wycomico County. You know, this is all part of Wycomico County. So, you know, we need to be enjoying those benefits of that as well and working together. Because like I say, it benefits, you know, the whole county. You know, it's just, there's not really, we don't draw those city lines. The city lines are for taxation purposes and so forth. But in reality, you know, I mean, I live in, my address is Salisbury, Maryland.
Right.
But I live in the county.
Right.
You know, but I don't draw a distinction there.
Right. Usually whoever, one of the at-large winners becomes president of the council. John Cannon is the current president. He's also running for reelection. If you're elected, would you like to be the president of the council again?
Oh, that's something that's, we'll cross that path when, when the time comes. Yeah, we'll wait and see how the numbers roll out.
You were council president, though.
I was actually vice president. Actually, when we served the first time, for three of the four years, John was president and I was vice president.
Right. So you'd be working with John again?
Yes, possibly. He's got, has to get elected. You know, we both have to get elected. So at the moment, you know, that remains to be seen.
Well, we asked him, we asked him the same question. And he said he loved working with you, if that's any consolation.
Well, we did. We worked, well, I think we were a good example of, we often disagreed, but we worked together at the same time. And, and when the meeting was over, we could go to lunch or, you know, or the next day we could play golf. And, you know, we, and to this day, we get along, even though we don't necessarily always share the same position on an issue. So, but I think that's how local politics should be. And I think most of the people in the council are in that same state of mind.
Gotcha. How can people reach you? I know you're out and about, but if I want to find out more about you, call you. How do I do that?
Sure. You know, in today's world, it's probably best social media. We have a website, McCain for Wycomico County Council. They can email me at mccainwycomicocounty@gmail.com. And we're happy to take questions and respond to people.
He's Bill McCain. He's running for the at-large seat on the Wycomico County Council. And we're just thrilled to have him here today. Thanks for being here.
Very thanks for having me.
We're here with John Cannon now. He's president of the county council. He's running for reelection at large. Welcome, John Cannon.
Glad to be here.
So this would be your third time on the council?
It will, if elected, it would be my third term, yeah, correct.
And you're excited about this prospect?
I, I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed it the last two terms where I was, where I was had the opportunity to serve and I enjoy it. And people stop you on the street and they'll say, why do you, thanks for what you're doing. I can't believe you want to do that. And I'm like, well, to be quite honest with you, I kind of enjoy it. I get a lot of satisfaction from it.
You've had an interesting term, this last term.
Right.
And I've been able to watch you closely through that. First thing was your leadership on this poultry issue. I was kind of impressed. I'm not supposed to be impressed, but I was impressed.
Well, that's saying a lot. I appreciate it.
It was, it was a hard issue.
It was a lot to push through. It was one of the most contested. You know, the last time I was on the council, it was a growth issue. It seems that, you know, every so often you'll get that. And this was one of those once every four years, once every eight years, really large events. But I think we pulled through it very well. I think we handled it in a very structured format. And I think it was a good outcome. There are always circumstances where not everyone's happy. But then again, I think that, I think we came to the best resolution for everyone.
But there were a lot of bridges there where you could have folded or gone with sort of the public consensus. But you did your research and you really stood for your opinion and the county's opinion and it prevailed.
Yes. And that's what you have to base it on. You can't allow the emotional aspect to take control. You have to look at what the actual facts and figures might be, what the data says. And then you make, you know, your, your best decision from there.
In your four budgets in the last term, you cut taxes in one.
We did. That's, that's almost unheard of, as I'm sure you understand as well, because you, you do know history. But we thought it had to be. And over the last two years, you know, we've seen the budget increase by 17 million. And we just felt that, hey, you know, it's, it's time to send some of that back to the public. You know, you can only do so much. And it was only a one-cent cut, which I think totaled about, initially about a million in the cuts.
It wasn't a lot of money, but it was a symbolic move.
It was, it was symbolic, it was a symbolic move, but it was also sincere.
Right.
Let's do what we can to make this happen without making sure we don't get ahead of ourselves and compromising future funding for the county and for the citizens of the county. But that's what we did. We did it in property taxes because as you're aware, we can't, we can't adjust the, the income tax rate without being penalized from the state of Maryland. So that's pretty much the only avenue we have to pursue.
And in this last year, education was probably the biggest issue I heard talked about between the Warwick Scholarship situation.
Right.
And increased spending for the schools. And you all increased maintenance of effort for the first time in many years.
Another, another really very innovative process on the, on the part of this council. They're not afraid to go one way or another as long as they think it's the right thing to do. You know, we are a very conservative council, but we, we don't, we don't live and die by ideology. We do what we think is the best for the, for the county and the citizens of Wycomico County. We'll cut your taxes, we'll give more money to education. On that hand, we do, and we do expect accountability when we do that. We don't, we don't do it lightly. And I think that the Wycomico County Board of Education understands that with the new superintendent, we're seeing that. We're also seeing the fact that there are really specific goals that the Board of Education came to us with, which involved the pre-K program. And I think, you know, you're not just throwing money at the Board of Education, but you were trying something new instead of the same old revolving wheel.
Right. And we've talked about, I sound like your campaign manager. We've talked about this before. But your development in the pre-K argument was fascinating to watch as a reporter.
I appreciate that. It, it was just, you know, a change in, in heart on my part, where initially I was, I was concerned that, you know, if you're bringing children into the school system too early, that might just be an excuse for, you know, for, for daycare, for schools to take over daycares and the government to be taking care, you know, of families' children. And I don't think anybody really wants to see that happen. I mean, the family is still responsible for the family. But on the other hand, what is wrong with starting a child at four years old instead of five? We've been doing five years old forever, for eternity. And I, I would beg anybody to tell me what the downside is to begin education a year earlier for anyone.
What's the feedback been on that from constituents? Do you hear much about it?
Surprisingly, I haven't had a lot of feedback from it. You know, I know that the Chamber of Commerce was pushing it, the Greater Salisbury Committee was pushing it. was pushing it. I think the people in the business community understand it, and they appreciate it, because, you know, in the long term, it helps raise the socioeconomic level of all the citizens of Y Comica County. And that's good for economic development, that's good for business, long-term.
Now, we have a county executive form of government, so there's county executive, there's the council. I know maybe that you looked at perhaps running for county executive, and decided to stay with the council. How is that relationship these days?
I think the relationship's working well. You know, the big, the primary issue that we have is that we want to make sure that we get a sensible budget that comes to the council, and that we don't get into too much of, you know, of a battle over how we want to address the changes, our perspective versus the executives. And I think that process went very well. As you know, there was a 750 that was in there for education one time only, which couldn't be done the way it was presented.
Right.
And we worked through that and changed it, and sent it back, and it was relatively painless.
Right. One of the things, and this came up, and I'd kind of forgotten, when in the last election, the county executive ran on a, very much a pro-business and business development, growth and development angle. And you guys weren't really that supportive, maybe, early on with some of his ideas for economic development?
Well, we really, it wasn't, we really weren't too supportive of the way that it was being addressed. We really wanted to see specific goals and outlines, and what procedures there might be. I mean, in the first year, we actually gave the executive the benefit of the doubt.
You did.
And we put about $360,000, I believe. We put that in there. And the, I'd say, the only thing that really came about was that we leased office space for a year, and there was no department or no individuals to put in that, in that office space. Which, you know, we felt was, you know, certainly wasn't the best use of taxpayer dollars. We got billboards out of it, which I don't think are so productive as far as true economic development. But we never saw any plan for real branding of the county, and ways that they could bring, you know, find incentives for new businesses to come in. Fortunately, we've had a really great couple of years with income tax receipts increasing as much as they've had. And so we've had a very good, good two years with the county. And business as itself has taken off, I think, just due to the nature of the economy, you know, nationwide.
Right. Right. And we haven't, I haven't heard really what the issues are going to be in the county executive race yet. I'm assuming economic development's going to be one of them. But are you guys prepared to maybe do more in new directions on this issue?
Well, it's kind of interesting. That's a very good point, because we're actually, I think that's what you're seeing. You know, Dorchester County went to a lot of trouble to create an entire theme about, you know, development in Dorchester County. They had a water theme. I see what we're doing is just as effective. You know, we're making improvements to the airport, which is critical. We're making investments in Shorebird Stadium, we're making investments in the Civic Center, quality of life issues, which people want to know, what is there to do in Y Comica County? Well, you want to have something, you want to answer that question. We're making huge investments in education that's critical, public safety. So what we're doing, you know, Jake Day's done such a great job in Salisbury. He's created a lot of enthusiasm, and you can see the tangible work that he's doing downtown, or with the festival. We're doing the same thing, but in a broader perspective. You know, making sure the roads are great, we're making sure education's great, public safety's there, and the quality of life is there, with recreation parks, tourism, whether it's, you know, beer festivals, or wine festivals, or it's USSA, baseball, softball. Those are the things that we're doing, we're adding constantly.
It's going really well, I have to say, as someone who watches it. I mean, because, especially with the airport, a lot of, you know, aggressive ideas there. You as a council could have gone, "Wait a minute, this is, we're going way too fast on this airport thing." But you've gotten right in there, asked hard questions, but you've been very supportive of what they're trying to accomplish.
Well, you know, we came across Dawn Veach, who is, I mean, she is extraordinary as far as what she is bringing to the airport. And she is so forward-thinking in everything she does, that, and, you know, you can't help but have confidence in what she's suggesting. And I think it's worth, everything that we're doing at the airport, you know, we're putting quite a few million into the airport this year, we're extending the runway, as you know, putting in the new restaurant area, and so many other things, some things we can't talk about today.
Right.
The improvements are going to be astounding, as far as how far this is going to go. And that's a huge economic driver.
Council told me, whenever a constituent calls, it's always the same question, "What are we going to do about flooding in the county?" Is that what you're hearing?
Yeah. And that is one of our priorities. Stormwater management is one of our priorities over the next four years. Dallas Baker, our Public Works Director, is doing an excellent job. I mean, he has laid out a very, a real good structure for where we need to go. And you have to take it by particular areas. Right now, he's focusing on the Pratt Road, Nistale area, because that's where we saw the largest degree of flooding.
Right.
But, you know, it's just not lip service, it's getting done. And, you know, we've met with the neighbors, we've been in the neighborhoods, so we know what the issues are. And I have to hand it to Dallas, he's doing a great job, and we're going to get there, and we're going to do it with the state's help as well. They're already looking at that Nanicoke Road corridor, which is so important.
Yeah. Whenever you build houses in the middle of cornfields, things are going to go wrong at some point later.
Yeah. And you have to make sure they're the right elevation, too.
My favorite thing was the Tony Tank neighborhood with air flooding. They blamed a storm drain, and he put a camera in there, and the drain is just as clear as can be. So the answer was not as simple as the residents thought that it would be.
Sure. A lot of it's all intertwined, you know. It's not necessarily that particular five square miles or two square miles. There's, you know, upriver, you could have problems, or upstream, you could have problems that create the problems downstream. So I think we're making great headway, and that is a priority over the next year.
So you're running at-large, and traditionally, the at-large, one of the at-large council members becomes council president. Do you want to be council president again?
I would be willing to entertain that. I really have to say, I appreciate that the council's had the confidence in me to allow me to be the president for the last three years. Because, you know, I have a lot of respect for every person on that council, and for them to have that confidence in me is, you know, I do appreciate it. It's a good thing.
And you're losing a couple of good members.
Yep, we're losing a good member. We're losing John Hall, of course, we're losing Matt Holloway. But, you know, the pool of candidates coming in, I think, is great as well. I say that for the council, and for the newly, soon-to-be newly-elected Y Comica County Board of Education. A lot of good candidates, I'm glad to see.
Like the school board, that was another issue that you guys, yeah, that you guys worked through that. A lot of tension, anger all around, but you managed to find common ground throughout the whole thing.
It was very interesting. I mean, we tried to bring in a hybrid first, which we thought would be a compromise for everyone, especially, especially in District One, which is, you know, is more concerned about diversity. We thought, oh, this is great, if you don't like the elected.
It will guarantee diversity.
Yeah. Right. You have the two at-large, which would be, you know, fail-safe, but that's where the pushback started. And so we, you know, we dropped it, came back the second year, went to elected, held the public hearings, went to fully elected. And I think that's going to serve the same, same great purpose. I know all the candidates, we've interviewed some, had the opportunity through some early appointments, and I think it's a great pool of candidates to choose from.
Yeah, we've been interviewing them here, and so far, everyone is very adept at what they're doing, they know the issues.
Sure. But you're right, I mean, that was a council initiative, that, you know, Mark Kilmer suggested, he put that out on the table, and said, "Okay, guys, if that's where you want to go, we'll get it done.